Uh, I make the motion that we open the planning board meeting for the same day. Go second.
Second.
All in favor?
I'll just put the question in terms of what we're here for tonight. There are two applications for the, I'm gonna say go forward, um, that are going to require, they can afford to require one board of appeals approval, um, a couple, one permit. So there's a number of permitting processes that are required, uh, prior to meeting. And, and so, and, um, all the applications, everybody, we would have to remember, I've heard of the planning board. But, um, planning board, and I think felt that it's really at this point in time to have a good meeting with the people there. Um, because, uh, it was the extent of some of the variances that are required, um, that's the, that's the most, it probably makes sense to make those more in agreement and try to give direction to the gap, like, you know, they continue to see through the language to keep the process. So at, um, at this time, we can open up with one, if you want to start off with ninety four or ninety five back, how do you? I know that, uh, the, uh, what's the name of the code? What is it called? Double quote, it's a question, it's a question, it's a question, it's a question, and, uh, absolutely, we're, uh, for, uh, we're, uh, what is, how has it come? Well, we do have the, we do have the, um, here, and we do have submissions, um, I don't, if the applicant wants to just ask those questions, because they would know it all. Thank you.
Our USB in as well, so we can work on, Leonard Brandis, Brandis Architects.
No.
And.
Somebody, somebody has demuted something because we're getting echo back through the device.
That be any way to do that here?
But I thought I'd have to get somebody else, I think it worked out fine.
So welcome, you want to tell us, do you just tell us who you are and?
Uh, I'm Leonard Brandis, Brandis Architects.
Yeah, maybe we can turn the volume up. There we go.
And we're just gonna share our screen here. And, uh, we had a very good meeting at the last planning board meeting, and there was a request to see if we can reduce the impact of the scale of the building itself in terms of the height, considering what we've done. Uh, we were trying also to try different areas to possibly add parking area to enter, but we found that we kept moving it back closer towards, uh, the, the other developments and other parking lots that were actually creating more issues than not.
Can you maybe just give us a two minute overview of what is it you're proposing to the board?
Okay.
You have to understand, it's like twenty twenty-three, the last time the village saw us.
Absolutely. We're proposing a fourteen unit apartment building that will be taken over, we're looking for plot changes, we have developed on that, we've submitted surveys and documents on how we want to do that. The existing, uh, front entry there, the gatehouse of the building, uh, that's there, original gatehouse that we have, we would like to have some sort of mimicking of that, you know, bring that echoing since it's there. The building for that will be, uh, uh, lot wise, we modify, we will not require any variance into that, we will be improving improvements to that parking area, we will also improve the building at the same time. It's still a one family house, we're not looking to change that at the end of terms for that. What we are trying to do is create, uh, only a fourteen unit, uh, building next to it, which has some character that brings the same feel to it of the gatehouse, which can continue that with the building. And we have, uh, in this case, uh, twenty parking spaces between code, uh, we have, uh, one more portable unit, which will be on the second floor, uh, you know, D in this section over here. And we have, uh, from the changes that we had, we can, we'll show you some changes also from last meeting that we had. The building was taller, we've dropped the building down, uh, about six feet, and you can see where the original building was right over there, the height, so we brought it down to be less impactful in terms of the neighborhood, in terms of the other buildings, but you can see, it's more going closer to where we are, the other buildings are two and two and a half story buildings. But we feel that this is now more in keeping with it, that's less massive on there. One of the main reasons that it's also taller is that we do have an elevator in there, which doesn't require an elevator, it's scared to get up to the stairwell, and that's the night, extra, uh, extra height in the center of the building, which is in the back of the building, and the frontal building we bought up to match in with the, uh, gatehouse, which has the ceiling. So, the back of the building, we did have the opportunity to add, uh, the original building, which was raised up higher, we had, uh, thirteen, ten, thirty, power plant to hide the equipment, we brought that down to six and a half feet to hide the equipment, for the main part of the building. But we'd still need to have that back area railing up and on the elevators there, we're using a pneumatic elevator system, we can only have a go of six feet into the attic, as opposed to going fourteen feet to the, uh, a standard elevator. So we try to keep it down as soon as possible, and account that the elevator will be in the, uh, basement area. And, so we have not changed the building stuff, and from the original, which is the top line, so you can see there. We have, we have the parrots, so you can see what the positions were, we've gone with the, the elevations. And that was the original elevation on the right side, and then the left side is how it resisted, we have a little one showing the other side as well. There we go. Okay, and you can see how we really dropped it down to try to make it fit in with the rest of the community. We're not trying to make a huge massive building that, that'll stick out as a sore, and we want some nice going work with the community, and we feel that this is working very well with it. Uh, we have the building set back in the front with, uh, about ten feet, because we do not want it to be right on the sidewalk, it is a zero lot wide if we wanted to, and reduce the amount required in the back in terms of the variance, but we feel that it's certainly exactly the space to have that in the front. We're airing in the front over there as opposed to in the back, we're not giving space in the back. The back of the lot, and I guess we saw the photos, we saw, there, there, photos. Okay, uh, back of the lot has the buildings behind us, so on the right side, as you see, we have all, we'll point it out, and that's the space that's behind us right there, on the top right area over there, that is the space behind our building. So there's a big distance between our building and the next building over, which would then set me be like a slide you're at to that building.
When you say big, how big?
The space?
Yeah.
Uh, we might have that, I don't measure her long one.
Forty feet.
And what was, I think we had about, uh, ten, and we had about, uh, about twenty feet of the next building, that's about thirty feet between buildings at the lowest point. From corner to corner here, that is the lowest, that's the closest point we'll be here. So, impact wise, I think we're fairly good, we certainly don't, don't expect any more development in this area, we feel that that isn't that much of an impact in terms of going for a variance. Uh, height wise, we've reduced it down to mainly part building to be on the. Thirty-six feet, we're allowed thirty-five feet, we're at thirty-six feet, this, I do want to hide the equipment, we do have solar collectors we want to put on top of this building, we're looking to make a real building out of this, I don't want those solar collectors visible, they do need to have an angle on them, and then size does require something, require us, all of the panel equipment. So we don't want anybody to be looking at panel equipment as they, right, they're all on the wall, so we still want to see that. And try to maintain a nice sort of building without making it.
Once again, we do have, uh, elevator, stairs, okay, that we have in the back, in the middle of the building, as you see that on the video over there, but we love that's the height for the front, so we can match that, and so we're not creating some, even additional heights that we need.
And, um, no more questions?
So just some of the issues that came up with our, uh, pre-submission look at this, um, amassing was a big issue, obviously the applicants at least looked at that. Um, the variances that are required are substantial, as I recall, and didn't, wasn't this the project the ZBAS asked us to look at before they looked at the variances? So, they felt that they were, um, influential enough that it might, uh, change the site planning, so they wanted us to look at it before they looked at it. Uh, stormwater management, I don't know if you guys have seen the memos, but, um, there are some substantial issues there. Um, on the other side of it though, this is a, a fairly dense project that is near mass transit and near a major thoroughfare, which is the kind of density we tend to try and support.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and then also to bring everybody up to speed on, um, another aspect of the criticism that we had is that, um, at least that I have. Yeah, that, um, is the, that the height, certainly, and reducing the height helps a little bit, but to me, part of the problem of the building, and I think we talked about this at the meeting, is its kind of, it's its symmetry, which makes it look kind of palace-like in a way that is not in keeping. Makes it look bigger in scale, uh, and more imposing in some ways than I think the building on this site should be. And what we talked about doing was acknowledging that in some ways, with the little building at the corner, it's sort of a corner site, it's not a axial straight-on site. And that the building could step as the apartment, if you go to the elevations that you have on SY oh oh four, you have a very nice elevation of the whole street scale, that the building's up the hill, and you step down. And that it would have been possible, or should be possible, to make the amassing of this building a little bit more animated during the same thing, both making it a little bit asymmetrical, but certainly stepping it in some way. Down from its height at the east end to the, or the south side, down to the north side where it would engage better with the little gatehouse building and the stair. And, um, I thought you said you were gonna look at that, but I don't see that reflected, I see the height change reflected, I don't see.
We actually love the whole building, uh, to begin with as well.
But the mass changing, as we talked about, about making it less.
I, I tried several different ways, uh, to do this amassing, and I thought that this didn't work it down to different heights and levels, so it's not just straight across, as we mentioned where it was before. Uh, that we did bring it down, and we brought it lower, uh, once again, the buildings are, are two and a half story buildings, and not three story buildings, we are allowed to do a three story building. And, uh, the amassing does work pretty well because of the space, especially having the city, there's text, texting other buildings, and that's just so much bigger, it's not.
I want to add on to what you said, so I, I didn't go as far as you did, um, I just identified a problem, I didn't consider a solution. But the problem I identified is similar to the one, to the, you know, to the one you, you raised, which is that, you know, there is a, it feels very, uh, imposing for the site. And it could be a question of the height, it could be a question of the symmetry and uniformity, it could be a question of the lack of engagement with the topography. And I'm, I'm somewhat less inclined towards a prescriptive solution for a creative individual, but those are clearly, those are clearly recognizable to me in the drawings, and then, you know, we took a walk over there earlier. And I, I think it's, and, and I, I'm trying to remember, and I'm just drawing a total blank, I know we met you a couple of years back, and I know we talked about some similar things. Um, and I do appreciate that you looked at some strategies to reduce the building size, but I don't think, it doesn't feel as, um. It doesn't feel like you've gone far enough, uh, don't think it is accessible in that way. So, I think there's some good ideas about, about the building doing your thing you talked about, um, maybe that means there's a kind of separation of how the, you know, the, the floor levels of the units, or, you know, there's almost two buildings, or some, I don't know, some other strategy. But I think that is a, that is my biggest worry.
Can I ask a question about the, when it's on a slope like that, and it's facing this way, what is the height determined by, like?
Average.
It's the average across the slope, so, you know, okay. I have a question.
On one side, it's quite a bit taller than on the other side, so, which is why our residential design guidelines stipulate that a building on a sloping site should address that by stepping down, there's a, there's a.
So there is.
We do, we do have that as part of our code, although it is not as, um, it's not as clear as like a zoning table, but it is part of the.
Like, that's part of the.
Have you looked at, uh, the elevation from Ashford Avenue? So in other words, we're looking at it, um, on Beacon, so the small gatehouse on the corner, what's the relationship between the side of the building and that?
Oh, yes, that's good. So the, when it's got a, uh, elevation, it'll go to the, uh, right, right, that's where it goes, there's a risk there. The building itself in Ashford is also brought down below the street level, as you go by the way, uh, I think you have to realize that.
Right, so, so how much higher is the side of the new building gonna be?
Well, you're talking about a gatehouse first, and once, once every gatehouse.
Right, but my concern is when you're driving on Ashford, what is the, what are we looking at? Are we gonna look at? You know, I'm saying.
Can show you. Our car into. No, how do you organize yourself?
But you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, 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 like an orthogonal view from Ashford.
Also, you can find this is not a flat building, by the way, in the front, it is detailed, it comes in and out, so it's not just a, a box going straight across.
So the side elevation?
That would be the side elevation, yes.
But you don't see that with the gatehouse in front of it, which is I think kind of what we wanted to see.
I can give you another one, the gatehouse is composed of, that I can do for you, that's not a problem.
So this is.
If you want this, we need a fourteen unit apartment, if I have to put a stairs in, another, another elevator, another set stairs going between the two, I cannot, I end up either lose a floor in order to make this jog, which then it doesn't become very viable to put in, uh, a ten unit apartment, because that's very expensive. I'd have to lose several units, there's no way I can jog or start having ramps, if I have, if I go down four feet, I now need a, you know, a forty-eight foot ramp, where it can be has accessibility, or put another elevator in and staircases, and it gets extremely expensive for a very small building. This is not a very deep lot, this is a difficult lot to be working with, and we're trying to create something that doesn't look like straight across, that's why we do have a jogging in and out, so it's not just a flat facade, I think that's important. But once again, it's also economically reasonable, it's not gotten down, different buildings with different layouts.
I want to make sure that we all get a chance to, because the primary goal is for us to talk with you guys about.
Right.
Yeah, so, this has nothing to do, or little to do with the, the building aesthetic, but I look at, at the, uh, the placement of the driveway, and the median that exists there, and the proximity of that, uh, Ashford Avenue. And I see a, an awful lot of potentially really negative traffic implications, people coming up, uh, Beacon Hill, turning, trying to turn left through the median into your driveway. If there is, as there often is, a line of cars waiting for the light going down Beacon Hill, you've got a situation where, uh, you could have gridlock going all the way back into Ashford Avenue. There's that, and, um, and I think this was, was mentioned in some letters to the, the planning board, um, it's a very highly trafficked pedestrian area, and a curb cut right there. Especially because you, when you're coming down Beacon Hill, you've just completed like a really snaky S curve, um, and you don't have a lot of time to assess what's in front of you, and all of a sudden, there's cross-traffic, there's pedestrians coming, it's, it's just very complicated. Um, and I know you said at the beginning that, like, you looked at other places to move the driveway, and you couldn't come up with any, but this isn't a good place for a curb cut and a, uh, and a left turn from the.
Would there be potential on Ashford?
Can I address the letters that we, we sent that I, I got copies of?
Well, you could address my comment.
I'll list your comment, uh, this, uh, the letters that we received were basically showing us entering into the old building, which we aren't entering into the old building, we're entering back here. Uh, so we're going around the curb here, going around to us and entering into it, so not entering here, the existing driveway for this building is right next to us right here, and certainly two highways next to each other, I think that would be a disaster.
Sure.
Bringing away from that driveway over here, I think does work, I did not want to have, it wasn't recommended any change in this, that people do come in here, that they have to go around to get inside, so it does not create that.
No, I'm not suggesting that it does, I'm saying that where you have it right now requires people to make a left turn through the existing gap in the median, which is quite close to the intersection, and that is the problem.
We're over here.
That's quite close to the intersection.
Right, but we're talking about, well, entering, but we're also talking about only fourteen units, I'm not putting a, an office building with twelve, you know, twenty, uh, office, medical offices there, which we can now.
It only takes one car not turn, not able to turn left to create backup into Ashford. That, it does not require.
Is it possible to have it on Ashford?
The entrance, no, there's really no room, this is the parking lot for the existing house right now, and we're gonna be upgrading that parking lot for the house, I didn't want to bring anything over here, entering from Ashford, I think would really be very difficult, because then I think you're really gonna be asking problems, that's heavy traffic on Ashford all the time.
What did you guys feel about that, planning board people?
You know, do you have a site plan, like, you have an existing site plan, and then you have a proposed site plan, but the proposed doesn't show Ashford in the median, is it, do you have, like, do you have that site plan?
While we're doing that, Christie asked the question, I don't know if you have an answer.
We haven't gotten that part yet.
No, I'm not.
It's a concern.
That would be a consideration that you guys should.
Yeah, that's just up to our list.
Also, something you might want to be aware of.
The only waivers I think they need is the.
Can you hold on one second?
Yeah.
So, looking at the variances, um, there was a substantial height variance required, which has now decreased substantially, but there's still, um, a variance of fifteen feet on the rear that's being asked for, which is not small.
Well, that's a setback, right?
Yes.
So that, and they all, but they also went from the street, um, setback from the street.
So maybe in our interest, I just wanted to point out that, that it's not a.
We worked through those variances, because you mentioned that that was, right, so the height is not as much of an issue as it was.
So it was.
Assuming this is, uh, amassing solution that goes forward.
And that's because they need the additional to cover the.
No, it says variance required, four foot six inches, building height.
Yeah, so, so the.
That is at the bulkhead.
That you have were from prior submissions, they just, I think this is like, you said something last week.
Yes, that's what we said last night.
Me, Anthony and I have not had a chance to look at those, and I think that's, they were.
See the substantial difference that we did bring down, bringing this much lower towards this, especially towards the buildings here.
So let's, let's just get this straight, because I want to address the variance, so the variance for the height is, you're asking for is what?
That's four foot six inches, I believe now, four foot six inches.
So it's four foot six, you're asking for.
That's for, because of the bulkhead, which you, uh, most towns do allow bulkheads without variances, I do need an elevator and stair, that's, that's.
Is there a variance on the rest of the roof?
Well, right now, it would be a one foot variance on the rest of the roof, that would be a one foot variance requirement.
And then how far back is it set from what, from the location where you could, if, if you went as far forward in the lot as you could, how many further feet forward would that?
I have, I believe, five and a half feet forward, I believe, on that site plan.
Right, so that's, you jump into the secondary, so the height one we know now is four, four.
No, it's, it's one foot.
It's one foot.
One foot at the rest of it, okay, now, the next item would be the setback.
The rear setback.
The rear setback. I have a five foot nine in the front, which I can bring my code to zero.
Right.
Uh, at which point then I would need, uh, you know, like, uh, nine foot five variance, but, but I just don't think that's better, I think it's much better to have that street presence, to bring it back to the street, that's a bit bad for the house, I think it's also for the buildings, a setback off the street, I think would really be a mistake to bring that to the front, to the front line.
But I just, I just want to point something out, the five minus fifteen is not zero, right?
No, it still requires.
Even if it were to be pushed to the, the furthest point on the sidewalk, it would still be a ten foot or nine foot six variance at the rear yawn. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, I didn't know if that was clear.
Which is like forty percent, it's not a couple, you know, a couple inches.
There's also no real hardship here to consider, I mean, I'm, we're not the zoning board, but, yeah, I mean, that is the measure, uh, the metric, is there, and it's clearly a self-created hardship. I agree with the strategy of setting the building back, and I would be willing to give that amount towards the variance, but the extra ten feet, I don't know.
Right, if it was further, I mean, further from the street.
So we have an issue with that, and is there anything else?
Variance wise, or?
Yeah. Val, anything else about, uh, variance wise?
Uh, no, not at this point in time, I mean, we have to still dive into like their newest version, uh, newest plans to see if anything else pops up, but at this point, that those are the.
One last question, that, that, with the, with the, the new lot line drawing, is the, um, gatehouse building on a, is that a conforming lot, or are there variants?
No, the gatehouse is not.
Totally conforming.
Right.
Thank you.
So you're suggesting, just so I can summarize, you're suggesting if, if the setback was increased, that that might assist with the impact of the amassing from the street? Is that what, is that what the rear setback discussion we just had, is that, is that the sort of gist of the, for us to, like, to understand?
I don't, I don't think that's gonna, gonna be related.
Oh, no?
That's in the rear and the.
I think they were talking about it, Laura Lee, in the context of, um, how far the building was from the street.
Correct.
Like, if it was further away from the street, we might be willing to do a bigger, uh, uh, decrease setback in the back, because the whole thing is just moving back.
Right.
But, but not about, it's not about the mass.
Right. There was a question in one of the letters about, you know, is this properties on Beacon Hill, but it's an Ashford Avenue address, I guess, because it's one big property that front faces, right? Is that the only reason that the back part is part of Ashford Avenue and has like a different zoning than Beacon Hill?
They're asking for a subdivision.
It's a subdivision of a property. But even if they said, it will be assigned to Beacon.
Right now, it's just, that's the address, but it.
Right, but is the zoning requirements the same for the Ashford Avenue versus Beacon Hill?
It's irrespective of the address, it's the zoning map, and on our zoning map, it, there's a little bump right there, that, that, that means it's included in the DT, so it doesn't matter if the address is Asher or Beacon Hill, it's still, it still has the DT zoning, and that's why, you know, there's the, you know, differences between that property and the one that's meeting the next to it.
It's always a problem if two zoning districts are butt up against each other, it's like. When you look directly across the street, it's an office building, right?
So is it actually, there are problems, did everybody seem to raise the issue of massing, the size and the bulk of that building, that seems to be a concern that everyone seems, that, as you said.
I would say the design of it seems to make it feel heavy and bigger than.
How big are the apartments?
Uh, the apartment's variance size, uh, like, eight hundred and fifty square feet to about eleven hundred square feet, two bedrooms, one bedroom and two bedrooms.
And what's the affordable house, housing?
That was, uh, eight seventy-two.
Is it a studio or a one bedroom?
One bedroom, with one and a half.
If there's more affordable, I don't.
I mean, we are able to keep, we're not looking for variances of parking, we were able to accommodate all our parking requirements here, so we were able to do that underneath, that's part of this as well, we've been accomplishing here. Here are the layouts for the units themselves.
Uh, another big, no, so to just move away from the design, just keeping an eye on the clock, um, that I just want to make sure we are raising is the stormwater, um.
Our engineer did submit plans for that as well.
Comments about the stormwater.
And we, I just, I'm sure you've heard this, but just to say it on behalf of the board of trustees, you know, we just made this massive investment in drainage right at that area, I'm sure you know, and, um, you know, that is a problematic, um, part of the village as far as stormwater, we know that storms are going to get worse and worse and worse, and of course, more, you know. When there is development, there, you know, pervious surfaces go away, but we want to ensure that it's as.
As requested by your engineers, your consulting engineers, Anthony, uh, we have redesigned and put a larger retainer area over here, and we're now running this to, directly to Ashford now. So there will be an easement for our property on this side, so that we can run the piping for the easement, this is what he had recommended, and we're following his recommendation completely, since he is most familiar with the latest changes and improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just think if we're, we're trying to give them direction, right?
I mean, ideally, I mean, I think they, I think the applicant heard that various concerns with the overall amassing of the building, so, you know, they can come back, come back to the planning board with some. they can come back, come back to the planning board with some other options, and then maybe at that point, we can also send those back over to the village board. We might not necessarily have to have a joint meeting royally, but maybe I can bring them back to the board, get your.
We could.
Village board, right, um, get comments.
You can always provide an update at a future workshop.
So I, so I'm sorry, I'm still kind of sticking by my guns on this in terms of.
Not everything has to step down, because other buildings will step down. If you go across the street to the commercial buildings, no buildings step down. They're just square blocks.
I'm just telling you what I'm.
I understand.
Just any minor action to this is still that the symmetry makes the building look overbearing. And that I think if you make it asymmetrical, including having this sort of larger centerpiece, could move actually closer to the corner in some ways, since that's sort of the view that you see as you turn up Ashford Avenue, then you could do something asymmetrical with the building massing on either sides of that piece.
I think I have to make it even bigger towards the gatehouse, and I thought that was a concern.
It depends. If it's treated as its own, like, tower piece or something, it could be okay that it's a little bit bigger. But right now, it just, the, the presentation of this symmetrical thing, it looks like it's just kind of landed here and it's not paying. Because the site is asymmetrical, right? You're close to Ashford Avenue, you go to gatehouse on one side, and you have the apartments on the other. And, um, the kind of the symmetry of it makes it look imposing and disconnected to the context. So I'm just telling you, I'm looking for some like, more than we can talk on the changes that I imagine on the awesome, so.
Does everybody agree with that? I have to ask back questions.
Yes, and I think, I too, I went to the consensus, I think.
I think aesthetically, I think it looks very nice, and it certainly looks nicer than what's across the street from it. Um, and it looks nicer than most of the buildings on that block, but it doesn't look like it fits with what else is going on. So if you can find a way to, to make it, you know, it's, it's still very pretty. So like, I like designing a bit, but, but I don't see why you can't do it, suggest it something that's a little more, so it fits better.
It's once again, I probably have to take off, uh, several apartments on that side to drop it down a story in order to make it still feasible to build.
Well, maybe.
It's once, I mean, that might be the answer, but we have to talk to the builder and the owner if he is willing to lose that.
I'm not sure, but a person not convinced that it has to get smaller. It might get more complicated to build.
Once again, adding, for fourteen units to add two ele, have two elevators, two sets of stairs, it becomes.
You could gloss the, 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 what story on the left, you know, that would.
Well, that's what I just said. That's what I said. If I lose one story on the left side, so it, so it does give you that transition, would be losing those apartments, that, that's, that floor. That would be the only reasonable, that I could break work without creating huge costs for fourteen, now it'll only be, I'll be losing three units. Okay, but you, you heard that, that everyone here is concerned about the massing, needs something to change to make that work. Mm-hmm, not a problem. Okay, we're running out of time here. We should probably.
It is a beautiful building, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure. Especially if a traffic study needs to be done, just so I can look at.
In mind, that's a pretty busy place.
And you could look at that and get, and get that, um.
Very good presentation of the project to the board. This was a much more recent referral, so this should be closer than New Henry Banks, although we are what we are, right?
Right. Yeah, so I mean, I think with, well, there's, this is just beginning in this process, but, um, this will require, uh, zoning variances as well, specifically dealing with the, uh, bulk count, bulk requirements for the units. Um, it will require fourth floor, so that would be something that the board would, um, have to provide them a waiver for to allow for the fourth floor requirement. Um, and also that they're proposing a height of forty-five point one five feet as opposed to forty-five feet. Um, and then they will require payment and legal parking. Um, and then this project itself, uh, I think just in general concerns have been raised or initial information is needed for stormwater or excavation, the retaining walls, just the overall, um, basically structural components of the project.
Okay. Yeah, I have a couple of comments quickly that I think came up with our first look. Um, you know, first of all, it's, like, once again, it's a good density match, it's downtown. This is where we want to see construction, um, and near mass transit as well. Uh, they're, they're proposing four affordable housing units instead of the two required, which is plus. It doesn't have eight stories down the hill, and if you looked at that site, it's pretty darn steep. So I kind of like the fact that it's not going to be this giant wall of windows. When you look up from the train station, retail on the first floor, which is one of our design criteria. Uh, parking underneath seems to be a good fit, even though it's not quite enough, but, uh, we already closed, we already touched that, yeah. Uh, some of the challenges are that high wall back there. So instead of having that wall of windows, there is a very high wall there. How do we mitigate the, uh, the issues with that? Um, one proposal was to maybe make it a, a permeable, well, like an open grate with maybe plant.
I actually made that, uh, change to show you guys, but.
I actually think that's going to be an extreme challenge to maintain and to keep clean and, and nice. And I'm, I'm probably not a big fan of that, but, um, it was an option. And last, um, there have been some concerns about the little tunnel on the side for parking access and whether that's a, a good design idea or not. So anyway, that was it.
Great, thanks.
Hi. Yes, hi. My name is Greg Sharp. I'm an architect located here in Dobbs Ferry. I, uh, represent the owners of thirty-three Main Street. We've been quickly through the village board for a presentation, to the planning board, uh, as well for an initial presentation. Um, mostly positive, those meetings. Um, and based on the comments back from members of the community, um, we've, you know, I've made some just, you know, minor adjustments, basically dealing with the mass from the back of the building and the openness, which I can, uh, scroll through. So this is, uh, the building's view from, um, Main Street. We're trying to create something of a loft-like building, industrial style, something that fits in with the nature of town, nice brick surfaces, and also have some, uh, different layers. Um, this is, uh, just a view, uh, from showing the entrance of the building. Um, this is a view from Palisade Street, and this is a view, uh, from, if you get off the train station. So, um, these are just some of the particular views. Um, this is the presentation. Showing just some adjacent buildings, showing the site. It's a very challenging site. I think that's some of the initial comments, that we do have extensive uh, structural and geotech work that needs to be handled as part of this. So part of our request is that we are able to, uh, obtain some type of preliminary approval so that we can continue on with the expensive, uh, engineering that's required in order to fully study this project's feasibility. So this is, um, basically the lower level that we're talking about. This is, um, showing the parking area and how the, how the tenants would access uh, the project. It also, uh, the client does intend to do a garbage chute so that we can collect all the garbage in the cellar and it can be dealt with in a civilized manner. I'm also showing some, uh, bike parking, um, and, um, electric charging stations, um. For the bike, sure, for whatever, whatever you'd like.
Since it was raised by the Westchester Memorial.
Sure, absolutely. Um, okay, this is just the overall site plan. We're showing landscaping and trees around the back of the property. Once again, this is the lower level, showing the, showing what's happening. This is the, uh, first floor, showing the commercial space, showing the entrance to the building off to the side, showing how you would access the, uh, the, the rear of the property in order to access the parking. Um, now, the, the project does have a slope of about thirty inches from the top to the bottom, and that's why we put the ramp on the lower side. So it works out just about as tight as you can be with the ten percent required slope in order to get to the back of the building. So this is, uh, nicely wedged in there. Um, and, uh, the one comment, I met with a, a different neighbor, um, the one comment would be that they would like some type of, like, maybe headlight screening on the backside of the ramp, so that if someone's, uh, you know, driving down the ramp, it's not going to shoot out into their thing. So I, I thought that was an acceptable uh, comment and, and sharing that with you now. Um, just showing the ground floor again, um, just showing the units up above. As I said, we do have four units, four affordable units and sixteen, uh, total units. Um, due to the proximity of this site to the train station, we're really viewing this as more of an urban type of setting. This is, uh, not out in the country. This is, you know, a couple steps from the train station, so this sort of represents, uh, a tighter type of lot. And this is show some rooftop, with some rooftop access for the spectacular views. Um, so this is what I was talking about. So, um, the underside of the, uh, ramp. So let me just see if we can get to an elevation from the rear. Yes. So conceptually, what we have is we have a relatively large underside, right, of where the ramp comes, because it's a relatively steep site. So based on comments, it was, my original proposal had a very large sort of like cement block wall, something mafia block type wall. And so I think the newest concept was to sort of open that up and make it more natural underneath. Um, I had thought of a concept similar to the, uh, Storm King stone wall underneath it, which is just a little playful, uh, sort of event. But in any event, just sort of like making a nice natural landscape under there, something that would, you know, be able to have trees and landscaping and, and different levels of, uh, of allowing nature to be set in, and also just sort of keeping it more open, not making it this giant, um, you know, block type of concrete thing, but actually having it be natural underneath. I think that would be advantageous to the adjacent lots and the neighbors and just providing more green. Um, we would still have screening trees around the perimeter of it as required, but, um, we just thought it would be nice to sort of have that. And none of this is really accessible by the units. This is just, would be completely just a natural, a small space for, I guess, critters and other things that are going to live in Dobbs Ferry. Um, so, um. So this is, uh, basically the project. So, um, I can, you know, open it up to comments. I think, um, you know, let me, let me know what I can do to improve the project and, and move it along.
So for height, the height is slightly over what's permitted there?
So let me explain on the elevation again. Um, so the, the site is a sloping site, right? So it's, it's a thirty inches from, uh, top to bottom. So basically, we want a little bit more height on the ground floor, just natural. So basically, you know, I'm trying to have something like a ten foot height on the first floor, but because of the slope on the site, it pushes it up just slightly. So if I was going to take it from the front door, then technically I think it would match the zoning. So, but it, obviously, that's not where you take it. You have to take it from the middle of the lot or the middle of the zone. Um, but, so I think this is really just a function of the street sloping. So, you know, we're not making obsessively large floors or excessively high floors. I think they're pretty standard, uh, development size, but we would like, you know, just as would be normal, slightly higher on the commercial side.
How big, big is the required variance?
I think a, a foot and a half.
You think so, because.
Five, five and five, five point one five, right?
No. That's what.
It goes to forty-five, right?
If we allow the fourth story.
Yeah.
Oh, it's forty-five if you allow the fourth story.
Well, if you, if you don't.
If you, uh, say four story or forty-five feet, because the applicant at the last version was proposing forty-five point one seven feet.
But point one seven, guys, come on. Tiny, tiny.
It's the same height regardless? It's not fourth story and then.
Are you talking about two inches?
Yeah.
Sure.
So it is. It's forty-five feet or whatever, whether it's four stories or three stories. That's what I want for it, so.
Correct. It's, it's whether the board allows the fourth story.
If the fourth story is not allowed, what is the height?
It would be forty feet, I believe.
So it's forty.
Yes.
Oh, so it actually changes if you add the additional.
Yeah, right. So like, let's assume that that's not an assumption, that we allow four stories, because we don't.
We do allow four stories.
No.
No, no, it's a discretionary question.
We allow three stories, but we can allow four.
So then I'm trying to, no, I'm trying to, I just want to make sure that if we don't allow fourth stories, then what is the height it can be?
Forty.
And what is it currently?
Forty-five point one.
So it's five feet higher.
Well, but that is including the fourth story. We understand what you're saying, yeah, yeah, I get it. That's, that's right.
That's just for my.
But he said, but the, as far as like the variance for the forty-five feet, it's only a two insurance.
Yes.
Yeah, but we shouldn't be talking about the two inch variance. We should be talking about the fourth floor. That's the big question. So I, I think, like, it, it's pretty clear, and, and an elevation drawing is not the, the only metric for this, but it does tell story. And the streetscape elevation really tells the, the, the main story, which is that the fourth floor on this building in this location makes this way upscale. Um, it's, it's not, not even remotely close. And I'm all for density. Um, I'm all for the number of affordable housing, uh, units that are in here. I want all those things. But balanced properly with a building that fits the context of the neighborhood. And I, I just don't think this one does it at all. I think it also suffers from a problem that we saw in the other project, except it's exacerbated here because of the thirty-six, thirty-eight foot height discrepancy, topography discrepancy between the sidewalk and the back of the site. Um, and there's really no way that this building addresses, um, that height difference, right? Except it's either very large retaining wall or parking lot sitting on columns, both of which are not. And I understand it's complicated, um, but I, it just, it doesn't really, there's, there's no engagement with this thirty-five foot height differential.
Could you just clarify what you're saying? You're saying.
There's a big, it's a big slope. It's a big box. Yeah, and, and, you know, it's a box type building. And then it's just sort of floating above all. Right, there's no, there's no way in which it's.
Like, you're talking about from the, from the back?
From the back. There's no way in which it sort of deals with, whether it steps down. I mean, we've seen, we saw a project recently that had, um, uh, it was also on Main Street, I can't remember the address, but it, it, you know, it looked at that through terracing of the, of the rear of the building and, and, you know, sort of addressed it in a, in a seemingly appropriate way.
So you're suggesting terracing may be an approach?
I'm just, again, I'm not prescriptive about what the solution is. I'm, I feel like that's applicant's responsibility and the planning board's responsibility. I just want to raise these issues because they, they seem like real concerns.
So, um, I don't mind the fourth story. So, I don't know how we, it's all, I don't, we do get it out. Um, I think, I. Right, it's setback significantly. And I think if you, what, what these pictures don't show very well is that the buildings, it's true that the buildings on either side of this building are fairly modest. But on the immediate opposite side of the street, there are some really big buildings that are at least this scale. Maybe I'll Google map it for a second and you see.
Yeah, there's one.
They're about the same. They're big, they're bigger. There's some of the bigger buildings down in that part. So I don't actually find it to be out of context. And I also feel like we do get more density and we get more four to go world units down here. And for me, that's, that's worth it.
The question, and the question I was trying to say about the height was kind of in that, like, is it, is the massing within what's allowed, or how much is it trying to go over that? And it's, whether it's.
Once again, I like the aesthetic of the building, and I also think that we're not the best-looking village in Westchester. You know, we have some very unattractive housing. And I think that it takes things to Dobbs Ferry, and I think we need to reevaluate the fourth floor. Based on all the work that the consultants did for the DIT grant, that was one of their biggest things they said, was that we have too many buildings that are two stories, and if we don't increase the density of the population towards the downtown, our downtown is going to suffer. And we have another store closing now because they don't get the foot traffic. And so this is something that will make our downtown more appealing, and because it's right near the train and it's transit oriented to development, will make it more appealing to younger people, especially those four affordable units, to be able to stay here, jump on the train, go into the city, come right home. So I don't have a problem with, first thing, with the fourth floor. I think it's a nice-looking building.
To go back to what Kristen's saying, though, if we just said, no, it has to be a third floor, it could be three floors up and out of setback. But since we, if we do require a fourth floor, that fourth floor must be setback. We're talking about.
It is setback.
But I know it's setback. That's what I'm saying. So way down could be more attractive than just having an issue.
And not allowing the fourth floor, and then going straight up to forty feet.
I think it will do a lot. I think the setback will do a lot, too. Change the way the building feels when you're walking down the street. And the buildings across the street are, they're big. They're like, they're like four stories without a setback.
They're pretty tall.
And so, and they're not very pretty. And this one is going to be pretty, so.
So any other concern? I'm going to, Mike, you could just, does anybody else have any other thing to say about the height of the building?
Well, I think, I think that the height from the rear, Michael brought it up, but I think, you know, looking, there's not really an elevation that clearly shows like what it will look like from the point of view of somebody sitting on a bench in Memorial Park, walking up Palisade Street on the park side, right? It's going to be loo. And, you know, so I think that that is a consideration. I also think that it's sitting right above the Embassy Center. So I really am very, this is for the engineers, but I'm, I'm very conscious of running water down there into the back of a building that was already had flooding issues. So, you know, there's that. And obviously, the engineer isn't going to let anything pass that doesn't, that doesn't mitigate that, but it is a, it is a really big concern.
You know, maybe if you could do a few longer cross-sections, like literally from, you know, add to the Boeing from the other side of the street, through your building, through the hill and down to the house, so that we, I don't know, because I think we're, we're some having trouble.
Yeah.
There's a block, right? All the way down to the station.
Look at two oh one, which has like, it's a rear elevation and it's got a partial of the building that's just south of it. I'm not sure what number that is. It's a building that, that from Main Street looks like a two and a half story building. It's kind of like a three-story building, because it's like a mansard roof. But from the back, it's quite large, right? When you're, when you're in the park or when you're walking up the transition, it is imposing, partly because you get two or three extra stories below Main Street grade. Now, if you look at that building next to this building, the proposed building, right? I mean, there's, it's a significantly larger building, both in height and width. I understand that the idea is that you mitigate some of this with what, how you treat this lower level, but it is, it will be significantly larger and more imposing than the one that's there, which already feels very, and, you know, the argument is, is to deal with this is to, is to have some kind of terracing, to deal with this slope in a different way.
Which is the same comment as the other.
Which this building doesn't do, right? The neighboring building doesn't do, and it's problematic. And then we're proposing the same, same comment.
So you're saying that the back is that, right?
Okay, I have to bring us to conclusions. So is it, is it a general consensus of everyone, height, four stories, the back, that's got to be.
Modulated.
If there's something else that could happen.
Is that the consensus of everybody? Right? We all think we're not.
Not mine, but I'm, you know, I don't have to, nobody has to agree with me.
Your problem?
I think, I think, I, I have a, it is, I normally don't have an issue with it. I do hear it.
Okay.
And your, and your concern is primarily based on the neighboring buildings.
I mean, it could be one thing, right?
And it could be proven wrong through some kind of, you know, like aerial modeling or something, but I just, it seems over the scale.
I know that every setback makes it more expensive, but the fourth floor was a different, was actually a smaller footprint all around, but had the front setback, that it was set in a couple of feet on the side and set in a little bit from behind, so that it would, it would have the effect of making the side and the rear elevations, you know, have a little bit of a break in the massing.
You would just lose, you'd lose the units.
Would you actually see this from the back?
Absolutely.
Can you see the, can you see the building from?
There's one inside of.
Behind the, very open there.
If you did terrace, couldn't you go over the?
Low structure.
Problem is, how do you, how do you drive down a terrace? Like, you can't, there's no terracing with the parking. You know, and it's not practical to have a building this small with an elevator, a car elevator.
What if, what if you, how far does it handle lever over the access to the parking, the ramp?
A bit, but I mean, it's, it has to, you have to be able to turn, right?
No, but you're, the four is above it.
I don't think we have time to dissolve the ramp now.
We're giving you the proper direction. So is it okay, I mean, there's a fair to say that we're the majority okay with the fourth floor, but we want it back, right?
Back and possibly.
At least another option.
Possibly the side. If, 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 right, if the smaller buildings on either side could, could help the eye kind of like more gradually go up rather than just going directly to something that's moving over it, just to, if there's something to consider.
How much parking spaces was it?
Fifteen parking spaces, so. You know, eventually, the building right below this, the site below this, which is fifty-six Palisades, will be developed. And that will, like, so technically, some of that space will be blocking the massing. This is, this condition is sort of like an inner courtyard. I know it's like sitting up, up on the hill, but those sites will be developed. So I think, you know, we'll, we'll look at it.
Just for the finishings, and the brick, like, I don't know how we're getting on, like, we've gone through a real big brick movement and everything in our downtown. I just want to put it out there that maybe there could also be other finishes on the exterior.
Well, he has two. Okay, I have to answer. So is there a motion to, to, Jerry, what, what are the trustee?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. You should motion to close the planning board meeting first and then close the guilty.
Okay. I make the motion that we close the planning board meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.